Six P M on August eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, in the Sunapee Middle High School Gymnasium. I call the Sunapee School District Meeting to Order. We'll start as we usually do with a roll call. Kelly, would you like to start?
Kelly Wesley, Business and Strategic.
Jesse Tyler, School Board.
Scott Rixman, School Board.
Karen McCallclaw, School Board.
Andy Nichols, School Board.
Ed Anderson, School Board.
Me, Assistant Principal, Sunapee Middle High School.
Walter Houston, Principal of Sunapee Central Elementary.
Thank you. Could rise to share the Pledge of Allegiance. Oh, sorry, Russ is online.
Ross Holden, School Board.
Okay, I'll get used to that. Um, rise to the Pledge of Allegiance together, please.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to define the United States of America, which is a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Uh, let's jump right in. I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes of the June seventh, twenty twenty-one, School Board Meeting by Hampshire statutes. We need to meet every two months. We, after the year that we had, we, um, took July off. So we've met in, um, June, and now we're meeting in August within the statute.
I'll make a motion to approve the School Board Meeting Minutes of June second, twenty twenty-one, School Board Meeting, C I P Meeting, July seventh, twenty twenty.
Thank you. Do a second.
I'll second.
Okay, for comment, um, any corrections, amendments needed?
In that, I just, I don't know if we want to amend this meeting minute, so maybe Andy, if you want to weigh in, but just a point of clarity, so there was discussion about how ESSER funds can be used.
Yep.
Towards H VAC improvements. We had had some discussions around being able to prep the facility to put, install H VAC, but we learned that we cannot do that. It has to go directly towards H VAC, so I don't know if that's worth noting in the minutes.
It probably isn't a bad thing to amend the minutes of that.
Okay. So you're, we'll amend the minutes by adding that the ability to use the ESSER funds does not include prepping the building for those fixes.
Yep.
Okay, so those are noted. Um, thank you for the clarification. Always good to bring those up. Um, anything else in the notes that comes to mind? Can I take you up on that other packet? I don't have that one piece in mind. Nice. Everything but that. Thank you. All right. All in favor of approving the, uh, June seventh, twenty twenty-one, um, Meeting Minutes with the clarification on the ESSER funds, please say aye.
Aye.
It's nice for the hand gestures for folks watching at home. Motion, please, for the approval of the July seventh, twenty, um, twenty twenty-one C I P Meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the C I P Meeting.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any comments, questions, clarifications?
No, the clarification that I just made was for this meeting minute.
Okay, I'm sorry. I had done for the School Board Meeting.
Sorry.
So we can untangle that. So, um, we'll move the amendment on the, I went in order. We're going to move the amendment clarification to the C I P Meeting Notes. And just to be clean, and before we move on to the next step, we're, we're good on the School Board Meeting Notes. Okay, good.
Yes.
All right, mix those together. So now that's, now that's clear. Woo! Been off for the summer. Uh, Agenda Review. Um, Mr. Holden, do you have any additions?
Any additions? At this time, no.
Okay, I have one addition, um, that I want to make. I want to add a public apology to the, um, agenda, and I'll add that right now because I brought it up. So I'll read it, and it'll go into the Meeting Minute Notes. Um, "I'm taking a brief opportunity during this meeting to formally apologize to the community and a specific citizen for initiating an exchange about two weeks ago that was unprofessional and improper for someone in my position. My behavior is out of character, and I take full responsibility and apologize. I want to be brief, but I feel the need to explain the context for this apology for those who do not know what happened. A few weeks ago, I approached, I approached a member of the community on Central Street and, uh, communicated with him in a manner that was antagonistic and confrontational. At the time, I was worried about a Facebook message he had posted sometime after the election last year, uh, earlier this year. The Facebook post still bothers me and frightens me months later because I continue to feel it was threatening. When I approached this individual, I asked him whether he thought this was something we could get past, how I was supposed to run a School Board Meeting with my concern about his Facebook post, and I told him what I believed his post implied about his behavior. I wondered to know if he was threatening me and asked, and I asked in what I admit is an openly confrontational way, how can we get past this? It goes without saying that I understand that it was a manner of communicating that was not appropriate. It imitated the kind of communication that is directed at me during School Board Meetings and through social media by this individual. It was a confrontational way of communicating, which I know is unproductive and ineffective, and I immediately regretted speaking to the citizen this way. I know better and sort of acted better. I take full responsibility for my actions. It was a reactive and unproductive way of speaking to a citizen, and I expect more of myself and my fellow Board Members. I do not intend to repeat this behavior. I would like to now move forward together as a community in the best interests of K-12 and Sunapee. Sincerely, Jesse Tyler." All right. Since we're getting rolling again, um, this board in the past has done a lot of work to have public comment and have two sessions during the meeting. Um, I want to sort of give you the overview on the public comment. Primary purpose of School Board Meetings is to conduct the business of the Board as it relates to school policies, programs, and operations. The Board encourages residents to attend Board Meetings so that they may be acquainted with the operation of the programs in schools. Uh, in order to assure that persons who wish to appear before the Board may be heard, and at the same time, the Board may conduct this meeting properly, is important, the guidelines are here, there's fifteen minutes. Each speaker has up to three minutes. If you go over your three minutes, I will say point of order and move to the next. When there's fifteen seconds to go, I'll tap my watch to let you know, but the intent of this is to hear things on, uh, Board Agenda Items, Board Decisions. If there is any individual, um, comment, comment about any individual or any kind of a personal attack, I will say point of order. You've relinquished your time, and we'll move on to the next speaker. I hope, I suspect the Board, if they were all sitting here, would say the same, something similar, that we hope to hear pros and cons, um, different opinions within the guidelines so the Board, us, can run the meetings we were elected to do in public. They're meetings in the public, they're not meetings with the public. So it's helpful to keep that in mind. So, we can start. If somebody has something to say, brief comment, we welcome it. Anyone want to speak? There's another opportunity later in the meeting. All right, seeing none, we will move on to School Updates. Mr. Houston from the elementary school.
I cannot believe that in the morning we have people in our door. We already have a list of things happening, starting with, next Monday, we are giving our kindergarten organization starting at thirty. We have, I have lost track of the number of kindergarten children arriving in the morning. Um, we are early in designing to assess the new starters and then also have programs where you take parents. Um, and so we're excited about seeing how many of our little ones arrive. Next Wednesday, at this time, we will be hopefully weather permitted during our after-schooling. We've invited Sunapee Police to help us fingerprint their volunteers, but state law says we need to have our volunteers go over a background check. We have a happy audience, so we thought, well, ask some of the police to come and fingerprint for us. So they will be here next Wednesday night, so we'll be ready to gather the buyers so they can sure they're all programming with families. We also are having Sunapee Rec come and ensure their programming for the school year. So it should be a fun night. We're putting together a staff in front, so the students can go over the building. It's a day for us to get our families back to school without cramming forty parents into a small room with all their children. So we'll use the grounds, we'll use the gym, we'll use the building, we'll get everyone over the place. So we're excited about that next Wednesday. Thursday, we, we're excited that we have a full day of professional development scheduled for the teachers. We've been using a math program for the last five years called E H New York, um, which has involved and become a new math program. So they're coming this time of day with our teachers on the program and all new groups of the program. And then finally, just to show on our calendar, we had to move it. It is usually, it was supposed to be, I think, September twenty-sixth. It's been now until October seventeenth is the Chatterfest. God willing, it's coming back in October, so make sure you put that on your calendar. We have to move it to October because New London plans their food truck, whatever, celebration on the same day. So you've been to the Chatterfest and having their food trucks. So we need to, um, Sunday, October seventeenth, so make sure you're there. So that's just how they have to tell the story. And the teachers have been in the last two weeks, having class at thirty, and in their students, so we're excited.
For the update. Nice to hear talk of excitement and chatter fest and children and being in school. Uh, Middle High School, please.
Thank you. So we have a number of students already engaged. Ball sports started on Monday, the sixteenth, so our high school students playing soccer and volleyball are in full swing, so it's good. Um, and so it's wrapping up practice tonight, and they're out. Um, next week, we have, on Tuesday night, we have a sixth grade orientation for, for sixth graders coming into the building, and then on Thursday night, we have orientation for new students. We have Gettysburg trip information meeting, and we have freshman orientation. So our ninth and tenth graders will be going to Gettysburg in November, or have the opportunity to go to Gettysburg because they didn't have the opportunity when they were eighth graders. So we're doing a catch-up trip in November, and parents can go learn more about that. Next week, during some of the professional development time, we'll also be preparing for our NEAS re-accreditation visit, so teachers have reports that we'll be taking a look at and pulling things together for that visit that's coming up in October. And, um, Mr. Houston, I've got this week with folks from the Johnny High Estate looking at educational opportunities that they have available there, but it makes some nice connections there this year. And we're really excited to see students on August thirty at this time. We're ready and excited for it. Thank you.
Thanks for that. I was just curious, including the, the public here for the meeting, how many of you have participated in close-up when you were in high school? Just curious. Okay, so there's some connection to it. All right, I was just curious.
The game, Justin, what do you ask for?
The close-up program where the, the students go to D C. Yeah, I was just curious. Um, all right. Superintendent, an update, please.
Thanks, Justin. So make sure that can be heard, okay?
Yep, sound good.
It's that great summer. We are continuing, working on our management partner, know that we, um, Nicole Bailey will be accepting her, her education level, she's taking a administrative position in, in Mary's first, so we'll be trying to, uh, with her main teacher, a hot name, teacher to play the game, helped by Sean, uh, myself and Dana, other than you, we can do, uh, talk about work. Obviously, there's a hot ticket, there's a opening plan, a lot of, um, that, what we, I must admit, that, uh, the recommendation was opening and contagious ways, um, and how we, that, 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 uh, I don't, I don't think it's, we're not through yet, I think we're not seeing how we open the doors, but I think, uh, uh, they're being flexible. The key, uh, I think, because of learning this to help, um, they're going to be there with their meeting here and looking for symptoms, it's going to be, uh, very proud of our success. Last couple pieces, we'll be, uh, obviously, visited, the government, our policies, I think, I appreciate with the, um, boss of the meeting, um, and, uh, a grant in, uh, government, uh, to, uh, sometimes, and they're very big, uh, small tools, uh, to approach , uh, from other areas of the community that they are true, uh, to take them out into our school to get money for, um, anything great, there's been a real positive appearance of, uh, never, so they will have kids in the district that is, uh, school, for their development, uh, who also think there's a great opportunity to help, uh, look at the concept, don't forget, but maybe they have a lot of opportunity in the, in the, uh...
Russ, thank you for that. Do you want to, did you want to speak? I'm not sure everybody reads the Meeting Notes, and it just seemed appropriate to have you, um, did you want to comment on the building aid, uh, in case people didn't catch that in the C I P Minutes? It could be...
Sure, uh, yeah, so, I suppose so, it would be, uh, the number three of, two or three of the worst schools, raised by, 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 All right, uh, let's see, we want to update the agenda, that was just, we, I'm looking for a motion to approve the student representative, um, to give a little color before I ask for the motion. Um, the Sunape Middle High School leadership has recommended Cam Messenger to be the student rep. We have the rep policy and guidelines in the packet. Uh, we elected last year, just looking back during COVID, not to have that level, that involvement, we'd like to return to that. Um, I went and met with Cam and his mom to make sure they had, they understood the, the limits of the role within not being a voting member, but also that, um, my own wish is that they don't, he doesn't come and say everything's great when it's not great. It's great, that's great. But if it's not, he's, we're trusting him as the voice of the students to give us updates and also give us a pulse. Um, so if you are, have any questions about Cam or questions about the role, we'd like to return to some normalcy and this would be on the list by having a student representative, which is a long history in Sunape Board of doing so. So, I get a motion to approve Cam Messenger. He apologized for not being here, but his coach wanted him at practice, so he's gonna start with us as planned on the September, September meeting.
Make a motion to approve Cam Messenger as the student representative?
Second.
I'll second Andy's motion.
Okay, any discussion, question, concern? Okay, he's a fine young man and I'm looking forward to having him as the voice of our students. All in favor of approving Cam Messenger as the, uh, school board student rep, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Um, give me one second, I got a lot of paper here. Um, what's that? What's that? Hang on a second. Uh, looking for a motion to accept a letter of resignation. Um, Scott, if you want to, um, we usually with resignation or a retirement, wanna show respect for the service and we read their, um, letter. Would you like to read Nicole Bailey's letter?
Dear Mr. Holden and the Sunape Administrative Team, it's with mixed emotions that I give you my resignation letter for the Sunape Central Elementary School Music Teacher Position. Sunape is my home and it's difficult choice to leave my fellow teachers, my colleagues, my students and my families. We will still be in town and I look forward to attending school events and community activities as a parent. I have been granted the opportunity to serve as principal of Maple Avenue Elementary School in Claremont this school year. I am looking forward to this new adventure and where this administrative role might take me. Thank you for the opportunity to serve our students and community sincerely Nicole Bailey. So, thank you Nicole for your service if you're, uh, if you're listening and, um, best of luck with your new position, you'll be greatly missed, but I guess, uh, you know, it's neat to see somebody, you know, that's been here and developed, have an opportunity to, you know, take a step up in their career, you know, based on what they've done here.
So. Yeah.
Congratulations.
Yeah, sad to see her go, excited that she had the opportunity and, and, uh, we're gonna wish her the best. So I need a motion to make it official, can I get a motion to accept the letter of resignation from Nicole Bailey, please?
I'll make a motion to accept Nicole's resignation.
One second.
Second from Carrie Allen, favor. Please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you again Nicole, we wish you the absolute best. Um, need a motion to approve the, uh, proposed teacher retirements. Uh, we have, uh, Joanne Scarron and Pamela Larpenter. Um, per Joanne's request, I'm not gonna read her letter, um, but with great fondness, we say thank you and then Carrie, if you could read the other letter, that'd be great.
Dear Mr. Holden, please accept this letter as my official notice of resignation as second grade teacher at Sunape, at Sunape Central Elementary School for the year ending 2021, 2022. My last day of work will be on June 30th, 2022. I'd also like to request the additional stipend for being a full-time teacher here for the last thirty-five years. I would like to take this opportunity to thank you and the Sunape School District for giving me the pleasure of teaching for this wonderful school system. I'm so grateful for being part of this dedicated and professional family. The teamwork from everyone here is why our students continue to excel and go on to be very successful adults. I have been and continue to be so proud to be part of the school district. I've enjoyed coming to work with my peers and teach every day, but the real joys come from seeing the excitement the children have when they feel success. We have a tremendous staff and it's been a pleasure working with everyone. Honored to be part of the school community. Thank you for everything you do for our school district, it is truly appreciated and does not go unnoticed. Sincerely, Pamela Larpenter. Similarly, I would love to say thank you to Pamela, thirty-five years is a really commendable career here in the Sunape District and I'm sure she has touched many, many lives here.
Yeah, absolutely. Warmest regards. And so also just for people to understand process, if somebody leaves to go, if one of our teachers goes to run a school, then there's the resignation letter, it's a little more immediate. Some of the, the retirement letters are looking out a year or two, but we need to follow proper process and we choose to share our appreciation and affection. So, all in favor of, uh, approving the proposed teacher retirements, uh, I'm sorry, I jumped ahead. Um, motion to approve the proposed teacher retirements, as noted, from Carrie?
Yep, I'll make a motion to approve Pamela's retirement.
Yep, and then, um, Joanne Scarron was in, in future plan, is it in there as well, uh, looking out two years. Um, second on that?
I'll second it.
Second from Andy, all in favor of accepting and wishing them well and thanking them for still being here this year. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, we are on to informational items.
You've got fall coaches.
Hang on a second, I just realized something. Yep, I'm with you, just, you all have to wait while my brain catches up. Sports heat and I have two topics for informational items I jumped to. Okay, now we're back. Pick two, scene two. Need a motion to approve the proposed fall extracurricular coaches. Therefore, listed, uh, JV girls soccer, varsity bass fishing, um, middle school girls soccer or middle school boys soccer. Have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the fall coaches as outlined in this document for this fall.
Thank you Scott, second?
Second.
Ed, thank you. Any comments from the board, questions? All right. Thank you to, uh, Mr. Dalton Messenger, Mr. Reed and Walsh for your dedication and afternoons and evenings that are no longer going to be free. Um, all in favor, uh, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, again, thank you for your service to our students. Just a little rusty from somewhere away. Um, now we're gonna go with informational items. Um, I wanted to, um, add two brief ones, I can, um, I don't know, just before you go Russ with the opening plans, I'll just do two quick, two quick informational items. I could look on my phone for one. There is, um, a question about, uh, there's concern raised by a citizen about heat and some of the stories in the news about what's happening with some of the sports practices and events. So, I wanna, give me a second to find it, didn't print it out. Um, so I asked, um, there's a, there's a heat safety policy, but I wanted to just read, uh, Coach Frederick who couldn't be here to speak tonight. Um, Sean is bringing his son to college, so he's not here. So I just wanted to use, um, be the voice for Tom Frederick. Uh, all the coaches take the heat illness course provided by the NHIAA. We follow best practices and safety protocols regarding heat illness. Coaches modify practices, include extra water breaks and shade breaks, our coaches are actually very cautious and extremely safety conscious. I hope this allays any fear his parents may be having. Um, you can always reach out to him with any questions or any of the leaders or administration, but I thought it was a, I thought it was a healthy question. There's been some really frightening stories in the news, there was another one yesterday. So I appreciate that from, um, Coach Fred. And then, uh, another one, a citizen brought up, uh, asked me to mention the concern about the amount of Airbnbs getting scooped up in town and how that might affect our town and the schools and otherwise. So I wanted to honor the request. It's not something I have a clarity on volume, but when we do talk about tuition and future outlook, I thought that would be an interesting to add, interesting topic to consider adding to that discussion. I'm more familiar with this at a different community in Maine where extended family lives, so it resonated, but I wanted to honor the request. Um, and again, I have no expertise, I don't have a head count, but it could be an interesting topic for us to consider in future conversations, so I just thought it was worth, uh, sharing it with the community and, uh, informational items. All right, I'm done. Um, Mr. Holden, you wanna do a, an overview of opening plans, please? Nope, wait, not getting you yet. Ray's working on it. Hang on one sec, give a test. Nope, try again. All eyes are on Ray. He's not sweating though. Nope, not getting anything. Just hang on a sec, he's working on it. No, try again Russ.
Yes, that works.
You're good. Go for it.
Thanks. So, opening plan was posted on our website and also emailed out to all our parents, um, as well as the board. It's similar to the plan that was posted back in June. Obviously, with all that's been going on with the CDC, Department of Human Services, uh, other state agencies, the plan is still, uh, I think moving and will continue to move. As I said earlier, I think, uh, this year is meant to be flexibility. Um, our, our plan right now does not require masks, mask for October, uh, but I really, as the government has stated, that, you know, it's individual decisions right now when people have the opportunity, well, vaccinated at their age, um, and, uh, be vaccinated if they're of age or if, uh, they want to wear masks, but they don't want to wear masks. And so, uh, right now, we're able to social distance, uh, all our kids at three feet, uh, in the classrooms. We feel, again, uh, the young kids, kids, if the parents want them, they have masks, want them to wear masks. All students will wear masks while they're riding our bus. And, uh, as we know that, we will continue to ask parents, uh, to phone screen daily. Uh, they have their new quarantine, their household exposure rules, uh, even newer ones that I pulled up from the plan and I will put those up upon my turn. Uh, really there's no more high tech basically at this point in time in our schools. Uh, someone was to have, can come down and cover their classroom, uh, folks would have to monitor, uh, themselves for symptoms. And so really, it, it falls a lot on individuals at this point in time to really make sure that they're doing their self screenings every morning and if they're not feeling well, staying home and then communicating that, uh, and then maybe getting tested. So, I think we have a good place to start. We have a prime responsibility, our main focus will be the safety of everyone within our district, within our schools and in our community. Uh, but it is going to be, I think, uh, the only time that we have a real switch, what will potentially change, that's means potential pickup, uh, or, or, or loosen up. And, uh, as that happens, we're just, uh, playing as needed and be responsible with our schools as well.
Board have question or comment relating to the?
Yes, so when it comes to the mask policy, what, what is our, what are we, what's gonna be the, the changing factor if we have to change that policy? Who are we taking our lead from? What are the decision-making criteria that we're adhering to?
So, I'm sorry, what is the decision-making criteria for changing to instituting masks? It was gonna ask the same question, so what is the infection rate, what is the activity and who is the guideline? Does that cover yours too?
Yeah.
We're gonna ask the same question. Just so, hang on one second, I think you lost your voice again. I'll mute in a second. If you can clarify for us and by extension the community, what it, who decides on the, a change and then just more immediately within the building, if we do have an outbreak, um, sort of the, the, the plan and the principle for changing that. So if you could give a little bit more insight, that'd be appreciated.
So, I mean, we, we will continue to monitor, uh, the town, uh, also county and, and regional contagious and infectious rates. Uh, as folks know, now with the type of state, it's pretty much a substantial, uh, infection rate, uh, although, uh, the data is suppressed in, in Sunape where, which means it's lower than four. Uh, I know that I was hearing the data last night in Sunape, I follow active cases, but zero new pieces, uh, murder with the town and fire department, but I presume something happened within our school. Uh, again, without the close contact, without the contact tracing, um, we would ask folks to monitor and if we felt that we had an outbreak, again, we have a rubric that we will use, um, it's one that's been shared by the, uh, by DHLHS, uh, as if it's ten percent, over ten percent, um, of our population has been infected, it's more of a severe, which we were in a way now.
So I think in these, I personally think as your, your chair, I serve you, I think it'd be healthy for each, us each to have an opinion. We're not voting on anything. I mean, we could certainly, it could get pushed to that point if we don't support the administration's plan. But I think it'd be healthy on such a contentious issue if we each shared our individual reaction to this and, um, so that's what I'm, that's what I'm welcoming. If, if it helps at all, and I'll be very unpopular for this, we had, we missed, one of the only schools that missed one day, we're in, in school full-time and only miss one day of full-time learning. My personal instinct, my personal instinct is that it makes sense to keep going with what we were doing and then back off from it. That is my personal one of five voice, that it makes sense to have, start with them and make sure everything's okay and then back off. But we're a board of five and so I think it's important to get a read on, in this moment, in this meeting, this isn't beyond tonight, in this moment, you, what, what are your feelings as a board member and our responsibility to the district? What are your feelings about, um, the plan as presented? Again, we're not voting, I just think it's healthy for us to know where the others are at, because if things do change, hopefully for the better, we can celebrate. If for the worse, we're ready to potentially support other decisions. So, if you don't mind, what are your thoughts about the, the plan?
Well, I mean, I think it's good to leave a local control because Sunape, you know, and Manchester and Concord and Ashford is a big difference. So, I'm glad that we have the local control and I think we've mapped out a good plan to start the year. I, um, I guess my only question is with, uh, you know, with the athletics. I know that last year there was a lot of vigilance and communication between schools as the athletic seasons progressed, so that if something's happening in Claremont or, you know, up in Leb or wherever, um, are the athletic directors and coaches still gonna be maintaining a high level of, uh, interaction on that so that we can, um, you know, change on the dime with games if we have to?
So I'm gonna relay that, if you couldn't quite hear it, so just know.
Summarize it, you don't have to be as.
So Scott wants to understand with, after the active vigilance last year to make the sports pull that all off and make it work, um, how do sports look in, in this moment, looking forward with the plan? You know, are the athletic, uh, directors talking to each other? Masks or not masks? That, just, what, what is known at this time? We still have a couple of weeks before they're gonna be playing together, but?
Right, so, so yeah, we're, we're worth looking at, uh, the way, I haven't received any guidance from them as to, um, masks or no masks. My understanding from what I have heard thus far, that, that will be, continue to be individual schools, which districts, um, protocols will be placed. And so if we were to go to report, reports that we wear masks, then we wear masks. And before came here, we required masks and they were not have to require masks unless they were mandated by the, 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 so low they can.
Does that help?
That helps.
Okay.
As long as we, you know, maintain that, because that seems like the greatest opportunity for transmission is, you know, when you're traveling an hour to go somewhere, you know, to play a game. So as long as that level of vigilance is being maintained, I think that's important.
All right, Carrie?
Um, I am generally fine with the policy as it's being implemented. I think there's people that are far smarter than I am when it comes to managing medical diseases and, um, I think we are wise to take their guidance and I am also thankful that we have local control because I do think that the circumstances in Sunape is very different than some of the problems there is. So, um, I'm, I'm fine.
Great, thanks for being open. Andy?
I like the opening plan. Um, I like that it's, um, optional for masks if kids wanna wear masks or teachers wanna wear masks, that it's available to them. They, they're, they can, probably could be encouraged to do so. Um, in my opinion, we didn't have any real outbreaks last year and I think it's time to try to get back to normal as much as possible for the kids, for their mental health. Uh, I think that watching kids out on the playground with masks on, running around and sweating inside them is not healthy for them either. So, I'm glad that we're trying to start with no masks, very happy.
Good. Ed?
I like the opening plan. I think it's a good way to start off the year and see how it goes. Obviously, my only concern is with outbreaks, is is it too late once you just discover that you have an outbreak before potentially to shut the whole school down, um, if it was to start to spread through the school rapidly. So I think a lot is on parents that do a good job in monitoring their kids and understanding, um, as I know many parents, when kids have sniffles, it's, you know, it's more of a burden to keep them at home than it is to send them to school. And I think that's just what we're gonna be fighting, um, if we start having an outbreak.
Great, I appreciate everyone being open. And again, I'm, sort of, it makes sense to keep going. I also don't see any benefit. That's my opinion. I'm not saying more than that because I absolutely trust the administration. There's, it takes a special group of people and a community effort to have been in school. I, I think it, I almost feel like thinking the summer and reading all this legislative stuff and getting ready for tonight, I almost think that something pretty amazing that was accomplished is, was quickly forgotten or not totally appreciated. I think, talking to the thousand coworkers up, and so I get to talk, to hear about other schools, I'm pretty sure, I think the Hanover Middle School or Hanover Alomich School is the other, only other one that kept anywhere close to us for a level of full-time. So, being that we did it when, um, and we had sports when very few did, and there's a horrible, horrible ramification for all these children that were remote and all of the other problems, physical, mental, emotional having, and our kid, our students don't have it. I, I trust our group, I trust you, and I think it's just, in these heated times, to have a calm conversation about it and everybody have their own opinion, I think it's very healthy for the community to see. So I appreciate your willingness to go there. Um, summer hires, um, Russ, you wanna give an update on summer hires?
Well, we, um, we brought another school that we're gonna talk about the nurse today later, uh, we're involved in a void, uh, Samantha, and we're involved in, uh, there's the new research for the SMU to be placed of, uh, three hours after one, of the special recruiting guys, they all have to be, we have, uh, you know, and, and, as I said, though, we're still advertising and looking for part-time music.
Part-time music, if you couldn't hear it, is the one that we're still looking for. Um, board questions or comments? And then you can go to the nurse update. You wanna go ahead into the nurse update?
Yes. Uh, so, again, we, we have Joyce, Joyce, we have a former nurse, several of the different, different district nurse. Uh, we hired Emily Sabini, uh, if you were here, our district nurse, she'll be waiting in both buildings. Uh, we then put some surrounding, supporting pieces around her and with company's patient with Emily, uh, and then looking at whatever some of the greatest needs in our buildings are and the times of those needs. Uh, we were at the middle of high school as some of the greatest needs coming up to three o'clock, where with the old motto, uh, I'm nursing one home at three fifteen, eight percent of our kids participate in extracurricular activities outside of the three thirty, and some don't, and maybe that's a six, maybe in the winter, obviously, with, with the basketball. Um, so, we were, we're on board. Uh, we then went out and hired a athletic trainer. Uh, athletic trainer is Lindsey Fiden. Lindsey will be working at the middle high schools, coming in around eleven o'clock, thirteen, morning, uh, between five thirty and six thirty in the afternoon. Uh, and then we had power positions in both buildings and we given a power in each building, we gave the responsibility, uh, excuse me, an additional assignment, which is to help cover the nurse, uh, nurses facility when the nurse is out. We got a buddy, Whaki, uh, at the elementary school, one of our parents that was out there, our student support system, she was assigned to the position in another building. And while interviewing to fill her spot, we found a candidate, um, Jack had a nursing assistant background and she's a certified nurses assistant. And so she is taking on the role of parent and student support at the elementary school and has a nurses assistant background. And so, a typical day, and we have, the key in this is flexibility, uh, way to talk, way to talk, a little bit of communication, a little bit, we might think, uh, but so a typical day would, would look something like this. Uh, at seven thirty, Emily would report to the elementary school, she'd be in her, her nurse's office there, uh, greeting kids and then somebody says they came in. Each hour would be, a student support person would be in each respective building. The student support person at the elementary high school would be knowing the same at seven thirty, um, greeting any students that needed any nursing assistants or taking in medication or administered medication, which they've been trained to do. Uh, and then we, we'd begin a little with the nurse, we'd have a whakataki, we'd put in whakataki stuff, uh, local, drunk, going to building, nurse, the nurse, uh, nurse station and nurses station, without any interference on them. Uh, somewhere, probably I would say between three fifteen to eight thirty, the nurse, someone would leave the elementary school, uh, to the high school. She spent an hour or so on the high school, uh, hour to a high school, like with point. Um, Lindsey would come in at eleven o'clock, Lindsey then would take over the nurses, uh, station at the middle high school, Emily would go back to the elementary school and spend most of her day there. Now, again, that's just where I would consider a typical normal day. At any point in time, again, with communication of the whakataki's, uh, in each building, in each building and in each office, including Emily, um, she can be called upon at any time to come on up. Uh, her, we have her in a parking spot in front of both buildings, so she doesn't have to run down the aisle at the elementary school or way across in traffic at the elementary school. She has a spot right out in front, next to the road, which she can just get in her car and be free and go down the aisle and pop over to the high school without, in ninety-three minutes. Um, I think it's a, it's a really good plan. I'm, I'm really excited that Emily's with them, I'm excited that Lindsey gives us a different, uh, spectrum of coverage. Uh, again, most of our older are students, uh, dealing with more, uh, whether it's concussion, broken bones, um, yeah, we have some kids that have some other issues there, but, uh, yeah, Lindsey being a, a, not a trainer, that's very, has some very similar, uh, in some cases, ability to diagnose specific things and to treat and to, uh, administer treatments as needed. And so, Lindsey, I think, gives us that coverage to six, six thirty in the afternoon, where our kids are playing sports, where before we had nobody really know, filled out with our coaches and none of our coaches did do a good job, they did, but, um, this just adds a thing and another level. So, again, flexibility being our key word this year, um, our opening plan, but I think this gives us a lot of flexibility with our nursing plan and I think it allows full coverage for all medical needs without our buildings at any time.
Board questions or comments for Russ? You take your time, it's our meeting.
Just, uh, I guess a comment, I guess it'll, it'll be good, um, as we approach budget season in the late fall, you know, it'll be good to get an update on how this is going so that if we do need to tweak it or do anything different, we can, you know, be proactive about making that a consideration for the next budget cycle.
Scott's mentioning budget cycle, if you couldn't hear the beginning of that, just getting an update. All right, so, can you hear me okay? All right, so it, looking at, you know, regular updates, every meeting and considerations towards budget. towards budget cycle coming up, about how we would potentially continue with this or change accordingly, so.
So two points, we definitely will continue updating, we would be, I believe, Emily started on the night, and Lindsay started this week. We will give a brief update in October of how things are going so far, and give you the way we're there. And from a budget standpoint, from the two nurse situation that we had, we saved about $40,000 in the current situation that we have, what we have right now.
I think that's a great idea to hear from them in October. It'll be great to meet them and, you know, hear what they have to say.
Scott wants them on the.
Or whatever he indicated.
Yeah, Scott's saying yes, please get them to the September, October meeting. Oh, it's, it has to be October or September, it won't be in over two days. Carrie, and I'm going to have to relay, just the way the audio is working, go for it.
Yep. So I guess fundamentally, what I most want to understand is why we've had such a significant shift from the discussion we had in April. This is a completely different model than we talked about, and I'm not saying when we are another, what's better versus not, but what's not clear to me is how we came to the conclusion that this was a better model than what we previously had versus what was proposed in April and where we've now landed. So I went back and watched all the video and the discussion that we had in April, and what we proposed at the time was single district nurse with two people, one in each building, most likely to be existing paras that we thought we would not need full-time any longer because we anticipated a better COVID situation, that we could make whole by filling these roles. So now we've got some additional para support with additional responsibilities in addition to a trainer on top of that, so I mean, that's a really big change in the model, from what I'm hearing. And I mean, I just, I don't know how to evaluate or form an opinion on what the right fit-for-purpose model is for our district. And while it might be a fantastic model, the big question is, is it fit for purpose for the size, our needs, and so on?
Could you hear Carrie?
No.
So you, I'm looking for body language that I'm translating effectively. So Carrie's special is this is around the fit for purpose, for this being the right fit for our district, like what other districts would do, and this looks different than what was initially talked about in April. So can you shed some more light on what was originally talked about in April to what we landed on, and then how this aligns with what other districts may be doing? Does that sound fair?
Yep.
Okay. Go ahead.
So I think, I think I'm going to throw that in another comment. So yes, I think we talked about this originally, we talked about just two para supports, with conversation with Emily, with looking at how that potentially would look, but then also looking at the needs of our kids, and then one of the things that I said at the get-go, that I wanted to ensure that the safety of our kids came first, and if we needed to put pieces in place, that we were going to do that. I had a portion of conversation with Emily, we went and we started looking for either a nurses' assistant, an athletic trainer, or an LNA, because we felt that there potentially find one of those that might be a good support person without having that nurse's full nurse certification. We came across Lindsay. Lindsay made sense, again, from a middle high school, there are other nurses out past by, I know she was, she was at New Fund at one point in time, there are lots of other districts that have, and that's what I have, excuse me, that's what I have a trainer, model. So we looked at that, and we thought that was the best fit, and again, it gave us that additional coverage. It made sure that I think, one of the things that I really heard from parents, that they wanted to make sure that things were covered, knowing the needs are a little different at our elementary school, and this would allow everybody to spend a lot more time at our elementary school. It, from that budget standpoint, again, saves us some money, wasn't having two full-time nurses, and I think it had that additional coverage on the back end, and heated post at the high school, which was after 3:00. I'm not sure if I answered your question.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, again, it's just, it's a comparison of the models, and what's fit for purpose for the district, and how do we land on those decisions? So yes, we're saving money, and that's great. Are we maximizing our cost-saving potential with this model? I don't know. Does the data that we have and, you know, whatever goes on in the, in the middle high school, does it warrant that level of training and the need for that coverage? I don't know. I don't know if we track those types of things to help us form the decisions, but it's, just from my perspective, I know I'm not being asked to weigh in on any kind of approval here, but those are the types of questions that I would look at, or, you know, want to just consider. How does it break down, what's fit for purpose? No.
Okay, thanks.
I basically have the same, I guess, concerns, is that we, we went into this thinking that we were going to have a full-time para at each school all day to help the nurse. And now all of a sudden, we have a new title called athletic trainer, which to me says she's going to spend more time in the athletic department than she is helping the general population. I just want to make sure that our athletic trainer is actually going to be in the high school, helping the children during the day, and not in the athletic department, you know, massaging foot problems.
So can you hear me now? Andy would like some clarification with the athletic trainer role. Again, I'm watching your body language. A little bit of a day in the life of, are they the nurse until school gets out and then they put their athletic trainer hat on? Can you speak a little bit more to that? Because I think it's a great question, like.
Sure, it is a question, it is a question. So as I said, the athletic trainer has a lot of the abilities that a nurse has, as far as administering medication, she can diagnose, and she can treat. And so yes, it has ability, it will have ability, and be the nurse in that role. With Emily's consultation, at the middle high school, when she gets into school, say hello to her, and what that'll allow her to do is, is only doing for the kids she's that are there, but there are kids that need to, at 2:30, that are going to a game, and when you get taken, you know, they're going to get taken, if she needs a follow-up, somebody that's heard of the game, keep concussion protocols, so she'll be able to do nursing role and athletic training roles all within that timeframe up at the 3:00. At 3:00, she strictly goes into that athletic trainer mode, and is that enough to deal with us doing athletes in our practices and practices? Does that answer the question?
Yep.
What is that, and what does that look like, like, come game day? Are they traveling with the teams? Are they here? Like, are they at the ski hill? Are they in the gym? Like, how, how does that work?
So from Carrie about the athletic trainer, are they always here on site? Do they travel with the teams after, so?
They would be on site. They don't travel to a weight games. If we had, you know, if we were playing in a state championship somewhere or something like that, sure, but for the most, for the most purposes, they'll be on site. Lindsay and I have talked that in the wintertime, if we have weight games and no practices, that she would maybe score at 3:30 or so, and then come back to be able to do the basketball games into the evening.
You want to add?
My only concern is if we find out that this policy isn't working, is this going to lead into two full-time nurses and now a full-time athletic director? Because now that we've experienced having an athletic director, we find that there is probably some sort of need.
Trainer, right?
Trainer, sorry, trainer.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure.
Trainer, and, and you find out that the nursing portion isn't being discovered, we're talking about hard cuts having to come up, is this a position, and is this person that's hired as a trainer, understand if it?